We've got stuff. Can't tell me a lot of stuff going here. We're gonna, let's get the workshop going.
Hang in there. It's one coming week.
We're gonna move up. A lot of work. We're gonna move up the first talk and the workshop, we're gonna just ahead to the 28th.
Hey Bob.
Library. New Business 9B. New Business 9B, we're doing 9B. Discussion first, so we can get that, put that, maybe a long discussion. You know, and I'd ask everybody, just for state, state of time and stuff, you know, let's do discussions and keep them at a minimum and keep it even. I understand that. Thank you. I just suggested that there that we move up to New Business 9B, which is a discussion during community building development team letter on case law and municipalities perceived on public programs without following its own ordinance. As you know, I've asked the city attorney to attend tonight and also provide us with his position on that case law. So Jeff is here tonight, I'll just let him shake it off on you. Yes.
Evening. Let me cut to, at least from my perspective, the chase, so to speak. You've got a couple of different issues. You've got the CBDT, which I understand is taking the position that the buildings and the structures that it would be building on city property would not be subject to the city zoning ordinance. Then, go on.
My thought to Curtis Amendment, as far as that being the planning commission, that may have been a form of their intent.
Okay. Okay. So is the library the only other issue then, or?
The library was gonna do the same, they would also look through the planning commission.
Oh, okay, well, then maybe we don't have it.
We were just really talking about zoning.
I was curious where that came from, but they were gonna try to circumvent planning.
My take on it was, and this is just mine, maybe the rest of, or maybe the council can correct me, I saw the letter from the engineer, I think it's Hubbard Roth, or whoever they're working with. And the engineering firm had included, well, they include some information, including a citation to Morrison's decision, that they relied on for the position that a city isn't subject to its own zoning ordinances. I don't necessarily think that's a proper interpretation of Morrison, but even if it is, I think the more fundamental issue is, is that the situation we're faced with here, and with respect to the CBDT and the library, I don't think it is. At least as the deal is structured right now, it would be the CBDT that would be building and constructing the improvements, and it would be the library that would be deciding what the library's gonna look like, et cetera, et cetera, building it on a city parcel. Certainly, I acknowledge that, but only when it was completed then, would it, only when it was completed, would it then go to the city. I don't think Morrison, even if you accept the position of the engineer on this, and I don't, but even if you do, I think it's very difficult to argue that the library is the same as the city. I simply don't think that analysis holds up, particularly when you're talking about a library created under Act 164, which is what your library is. It's a joint library with Solon Township, this is not singularly a city library. Solon and the city, as you know, both have the right to appoint the governing body. That in and of itself, I think, makes it an independent authority. But even if that weren't the case, if this were singularly a city library, I think if you look at the powers under Act 164, if you look at both case law and AG opinions, I think it's pretty conclusive that the state at least recognizes these types of libraries as independent authorities. If that's true, and they are independent in that regard from the city, then in my opinion, they're gonna be subject to the city zoning ordinance. Now, that doesn't mean the council can't amend the zoning ordinance to provide a waiver for certain types of public buildings, you certainly have that within your authority. It would have to run through the planning commission, because it would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, but you could certainly do that, if that's what you want to do. In the same way, if you want to waive fees, or any of those things, you have the authority to do that as well. So, I guess my point is, I think you can get where you're trying to get, I wouldn't rely on the argument that has been made by the engineer to get there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, last Tuesday night, the planning commission, this was picked around pretty good period there. And kinda, I didn't, you know, kinda what I walked away from that meeting was that the planning commission was agreements to, he does agree some of the property, which is, let's say the amphitheater side is I-1, we change that to a B-3, and in parallel with it, build or put together a PUD for that whole site. Having said that, now, if the library complies with our ordinances, and they submit a site plan, they would have to go through the ZBA to receive relief on possibly some of the ordinances that are restricted in B-3 to that building.
Well, it depends on, it depends on your PUD language, the existing PUD language that you would be relying on.
Okay, here's the rough, we don't have the PUD built for that area yet.
Okay.
If we implement that and start it, let's say in 90 days, they project that it could happen, then if they approve the site plan, and we go to the ZBA and get the variance, or get denied the variance, by the time of construction, let's say in February, the PUD is built and enforced, made, then would the site plan be in compliance without the ZBA's?
Sure. Well, what you often see, as some of you probably know, is oftentimes the PUD, depending on the language in the PUD, will allow the planning commission or the city council to actually waive certain requirements. So to the extent they would otherwise need variances under the current language, you could draft, I mean, you could certainly draft, or Carmen could certainly draft a text amendment for a PUD that would allow the planning commission or the city council to go ahead and waive those provisions, and you could just bypass the ZBA altogether.
Yeah, like, I'm talking to Hopkins, Mr. Hopkins can verify, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was the direction, that was the direction we're looking at, to do the B-3 rezone, same thing with the PUD.
Are you talking like setbacks, that kind of thing, is that?
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
That was the beginning to be the sticking point. And make this do that approximately 90 days.
Yeah, you could have a text ordinance amendment in place, if you fast-tracked it. Well, you could have, you could have the text ordinance in place within 60 days if you fast-track it, and there's no reason, the minute it wasn't basically in effect, they couldn't come in and apply.
Because they figured 90 days, that's what I'm talking about. That was because of the public orders, the public notices we have to comply with.
Right.
But then, I guess what would be our first step, though?
If it were me, I'd be calling Carmen up, and I'd say, okay, here's what, I want a PUD ordinance, I want it, we call it a mixed-use PUD, or a public institution PUD, whatever you want to call it.
Community use.
Community use PUD.
The money is divided more, they have suggested that in the future we put it to community use, but we see that's gonna take at least eight to 10 months, or 90, longer than, to get the, because it's a, it's a donate, they do the zoning, but it's.
Actually, and Thad and I haven't talked about this, but I'm just thinking out loud, if you came up, it seems to me, if you came up with the right PUD designation, they could come in, they could apply, and frankly, I should know and I don't, are they all going on the same person, or are we talking about a different person?
Basically, it would be that same.
Okay. It seems to me, they could come in, submit a, they could get approval for the overall preliminary site plan that would go with the, that would be tied to the PUD, and then as each component was ready, they could come in and get separate final site plan approval.
Yeah.
And that, yeah.
What you're saying, like, possibly, Mr. Carmen said that he could go on language, that it would only be a two or three pager.
Yep.
And that could be implemented within 60 days, and then just to advertise.
Right, we've got, we have to have a notice public hearing in front of the planning commission for any amendment to the zoning ordinance, that's 15 days beyond that, and how many readings you have, things like that.
We have two.
So, you could, I mean, realist, I honestly think, if you push, you can have it done in two months. At least to the point where they could then walk in with a site plan.
Okay. That's, I guess, I don't know, the rest of the council.
I know.
And we talked about that community use, and we just, you know, and that's a great idea, but it's gonna take longer to do that, to develop that zoning district, because of, you know, changing the ordinance, a couple of readings, you have to look to make sure how it intertwines with everything else, and that wasn't meeting their timeline. So what we suggested is that they do the B-3 rezone, and concurrently with a PUD request, and then at a later time, we can come out and do something.
There's probably a couple of different ways to skin the cat, so to speak.
That's kind of, you know, time is an essence.
Yep.
Is it something you could work with timeline to expedite?
Yeah. I've actually got one or two, now, they're not specifically designed to community use purposes, but I've got a couple that use the exact procedure I was just describing. So I could at least, at a minimum, it seems to me, I could send him these and say, okay, see if you could follow this kind of a format, and he could probably, just at least a draft, he could take a look at.
We can make it by the 19th.
Okay.
What? The 9 days.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is. I know Jeff is fast.
This month just started, it's half a month already.
This week is in 35 days long. I don't know. I feel like the head.
Yeah, anybody else on staff? That sounds like a plan, or?
I mean, if we need to have a special meeting, I mean, to move it along.
I guess we know what steps we need to take next.
It just is a, it just show a piece of information, it's my understanding, that you could clarify with the people of the community building, the faculty, that they purchased an additional piece of property on the other side of the creek, for which they intend to create a community building.
Okay.
So, I don't know how that would.
It would, it would come into play.
Sure.
If I could just offer that, I suggested that community building development team is, apparently they're going to give the donated a portion of the old John's property, and I suggested whoever owns that property now, get a letter asking for the rezoning of whatever portion they're gonna give, and we could get that all at one time. You know, and then they just purchased another house on Main Street, just immediately North Lake Creek, so that also, once everything's all in place, could be incorporated.
Well, and even if, even if some of the pieces aren't ready yet, you can at least get it in place, you can always go back and amend, add additional areas, PUD, or whatever, so.
And as far as the community designate, are we gonna pass that with the master plan and work on that?
Okay.
To get that in from there, because there's a whole lot more stuff used.
Yeah, that's the other issue, is, you all know, the planning commission typically would look at the master, if, if they're looking at a new zoning designation for this parcel, or this area, they're gonna be looking at the master plan, so yeah, I think that's a good idea to kind of include that as part of the discussion.
Okay, so, but I think we're all on the same.
So, we need a special meeting?
Do we need a motion to implement the site plan?
No, I guess my suggestion was, Thad thinks we need something more formal, I'd be inclined to say, why don't I just, I'll get together with Carmen, we should at least have something, your next regular meeting is?
November.
Okay, yeah, no, we could have, we can get a report out, I would think, even by next week sometime, to at least tell you kind of what it's, what the outline looks like.
The planning commission, that 28th before.
So we could have an update at the 19th?
No.
We could do that.
We have a special meeting on the 19th, we have an update.
We could at least give you an update, yeah, by the 19th, just to tell you, tell you where we're at.
Item, it could be a special item at our special meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, is that?
The 19th?
Do you hear any dissent from people?
I think, I think it sounds great.
Yeah, it's there, and there. We just heard the end, so I don't hear all of it, but he says, oh, everything's done.
So the plan would be an update on the 19th, and then it would be prepared to begin the process on the, at the November 10th meeting?
Start them all over.
And you don't really do the happy news? If you don't eat anything else from us, like, it's good.
No.
Or motions, or votes, or?
No.
Reports to do.
Any questions?
Yes, go forth and do.
Any questions on the, Mr. Slugger? Yeah, I guess, while he's here, do you want us to talk about the library, or?
Do you want me to do the library? I can do a real quick.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know it's part of your package. You were trying to do two principal things with the document that's in front of you, sorry.
Yeah.
The one is, the license and development agreement, which is the principal document, is substantially identical to the same agreement we worked out with the CBDT, almost word for word in many respects. It calls out for the same process, the same waiver of fees, et cetera, et cetera. Our understanding was, that's kind of what the city council was looking for. The second part is, and one of the things that's in the license agreement that's not in the CBDT provision, because it's different, is provision for the lease. So we've attached a sample lease, it's kind of intended that that's the lease that we could use, although there's nothing in that lease that's cast in stone, it's what's called a triple net lease, which means basically, they would pay, well, in this case, they're only gonna pay a dollar a year in terms of rent, but they're responsible for all utilities, insurance, anything else, and any expenses that go with the lease of the property would be their responsibility.
Okay.
Which is, which is again substantially, I'm sorry.
That, that's good, and I guess, I guess is where I may answer too, Mr. Slugger, is that, when they bring the planning, to the planning commission their site plan approval, they want to, and of course we do too, but everything in all this, so the school tradition can therefore.
Okay.
And that's, I guess.
Understood.
Their timeline is to bid around the first of the year, February.
Okay.
So we've got to have this hopefully in place, by not circumventing any of our laws that we're bound in mind, to make sure that legally enough is going.
Yeah, they may, in terms of bidding, even assuming, not even, assuming we can get everything done within that 60, 75 day outside date, so that they can get an application in, they're gonna have to probably at some point make a decision, are we gonna, are we comfortable bidding it out, even though we haven't gotten, for example, final site plan approval? The ordinance amendment's in place, we're in process, but are we comfortable bidding it out, even though we don't have the final stamp from the city? My guess is they probably would be, because it will be in place before the bids will probably become, come in, so.
And then the other question I would have, now, once, okay, we got this all set, and they are, they are building, would, how would we, basically, the city, let's say for a better word, appoint them as our construction management team?
Well, what we're, we're not even doing it. They're, they're building it, they're gonna design it, now, I mean, the city will have some input, to the extent that we're integrating them into the zoning process, but other than that, under the agreement at least that's in the packet in front of you right now, they pretty much run the show. Now, they'll have to come to you and get kind of your blessing, in terms of, does it look okay, do we like how it's provisioned, but beyond that, it's their responsibility to build.
Well, that's, you know, like, and, and talking to some people, and this is about a $10 million gift, who all said, no, everything is doing.
Yeah, property.
It's a lot of zeros.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's fine about that, unfortunately, we don't, but to make the best of everything, you know, let's go.
Okay. Uh huh, I got it.
No, 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 but the agreement's there, it gives the library, the fact it's added after that community building development team, the agreement, that they have control of the property, and bring their site plans, bring their PUD requests, they construct their projects, and then, when they're done, and the city has a period of time where we can review it, accept it, and then, at that point, we take ownership of those projects.
Right. Which again, is the same process we've provided for with the CBDT, yeah.
Not having a little box at once.
Right.
Any other questions with Mr. Slugger?
And I just, is there anything that we should be aware of that could get in the way of making this known?
No, it's just, well, I mean, we're gonna have to work out the text, and planning commission and the city council are gonna have to sign off on the text, but in terms of the process, no.
Okay.
So basically, we're just gonna rezone it to B-3, including the property on the other side of the trail, put together a PUD, and then move forward.
What is, what is the PUD gonna be?
So, PUD, what I'm hearing is that.
What kind of a PUD? Because it's not going to be community use, community use, so what is it?
We have, there's two different types, there's essentially two different types of PUDs. You've got a legislative PUD, which is a separate zoning district in and of itself, and then you also have what are called administrative PUDs, which is more like, it's kind of like an overlay, special use overlay kind of thing. If I'm hearing Thad correctly, you're thinking the underlying zoning would stay B-3, but we'd have basically an overlay of the PUD, but it would still have those features. I was talking about, for example, allowing the planning commission or the city council to waive certain requirements, and that's, that part's very typical with a PUD, so.
Carmen's saying, I think that was pretty cut and dried, and it's very minimal.
Okay.
It's a repay, it's, the PUD gives the planning commission a lot of flexibility, something to make projects work.
Right.
PUD site specific for that period.
Right.
Okay. And then is the long-range plan to change it to community use, or it doesn't matter?
In the future, yes.
Well, that'll be with the master plan.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, that would be long-range, I'm not, I'm not admitting, I'm adding.
No, that'd be good, because then, then you're reflecting in your master plan, what's actually happening, or has already happened on the ground, so.
Is that, is that the position of the planning commission, that that's a designation you want to add?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That's, we're behind that.
I, I have no opinion on it when there's a, whatever the planning commission thinks is fabulous.
Any other questions of Mr. Slugger? If not, I'm sure he's gonna regretfully leave, but.
I thought I'd stay.
Great, you can.
You can watch us on YouTube later.
Just turn the media off. You can watch us on YouTube. Okay.
Every trip I need through Meyer, I never entertain.
I'll give you a call mark.
Okay.
Thank you, you were seeing help.
Great, you're very welcome. Consent agenda, approved immediately in minutes to the last evening, checks, we have a lot of them out there, and that's because our tax plans are back to school, I admire them.
Did he go out and buy that steam powered? That's what I'm saying, it's the steam powered fire truck.
Probably, probably a payment toward the construction project.
For silence?
Yeah, yeah, that's critical, yeah. And also gonna be approving election inspectors for the November meeting, and the candidates for the MML, we direct you a lot. Core comments, there's four pieces of core comments, hopefully have a chance to, I have one more, other core comments?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that was sent to me, and, and what's that?
It is from Red Flannel.
Okay. Can you just put that as E?
So they want it really loud?
Yes. Unfinished business, Kevin Gallinway will be here giving a final report on the gazebo. He did, throughout, the idea of maybe a ribbon cutting, I talked to the mayor, the mayor was interested in something like that, so we'll work to put, we'll work with Kevin on putting together some kind of a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Are you gonna do it?
Yeah, I know, yeah, but.
Okay. Well, you're not gonna be, tell me. Like, I just like to have a heads up.
It could be a six hour notice.
Not that it's ever happened. I know.
Next under unfinished business is the council action on recording additional city meetings. I was able to set up another channel for lack of better terms, for our planning commission, it can be done, I think I can do it again, I got two at once. Talked with the website designer, and she can put additional buttons on our website that will take people directly there. It doesn't seem to be overly time-consuming, I know it won't be very time-consuming to the ZBA, because you're only four meetings a month, or a year, you know, just hope you need a more meaningful.
Four meetings a month.
I mean, you know, it's like anything else, if you do this more, and you become more proficient, but it's getting a little, it's a little less time-consuming to make those clips and get them posted, so, as I said, you know, if council's wishing to do that, that can be done, if not, a lot of additional staff time. Next is the council action on library lease and development agreement, so that's in your packet, again, it pretty much mirrors the same agreement that we had with the community building development team, the only difference is, the city terms stated was the attachment to the exhibit D, which is the lease, but it mirrors it, and the lease mirrors what is in existence right now. Council action on appointments to the fire burn committee, I'm recommending, what, I didn't, well, I, I, for some reason, my top one didn't come through, but the chief phaser, firefighter Steve Shipper, myself, Sherry Foster for the planning commission, Jeff Gus from the community building development team, Dale Legend for the community building team, Mark Fanghauser is the community representative, and also, at least one representative from the council, and I had that two being determined. These were selected for a number of reasons, obviously, the two firefighters speak for themselves, myself is the manager, plus, I was involved in the fire service for 25-plus years, and I have some knowledge in that area, Sherry Foster, I thought, someone from the planning commission should be there to represent them, and the two from the community building development team, and then Mark Fanghauser, I thought was important, had a citizen representative, he also has almost 25 years of service, or fire service, and he's a candidate for the fire department, so, I think that would be a great committee to get going on there. I think it could be, I think it would be a lot of stuff to get.
My only question is, is two people from the fire department and not, besides Marty?
I think it is. I mean, I, knowing how Marty works.
I know.
It's not gonna be an asylum, these are gonna be shared in the.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that the fire department people, because they were, they were reaching out to me, I mean, that was, because I'm not, I have no background in fire. I just wanna make sure that their voices are heard, not that you wouldn't do that, but I mean, if I don't, it's my job to make sure that you had the seat at the table.
For years, when I didn't get what I wanted, I filed it, now I don't file that guy what I want.
Okay, so two is sufficient? Yes?
What's that?
Two is sufficient, besides you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I would say.
Originally, I submitted three names with Thad up, you know, I, I could've put in twenty names, but everybody down there would like some input, but what they'll do is they'll come to us too, and then we'll bring it from there.
Okay.
Great.
Because if you wanted, if there's someone else who wants, you can expand it.
I think two is sufficient, yeah.
Okay.
Next is a second consideration on the agreement, or the amendment to the agreement with Wolverine Skyhawks Model Club, flying club. Next is, the next two are just second considerations on ordinance amendments, they're what they're on, so this will be the second reading. Next would be the resolution to approve the chamber permits to downtown trip a treat event as a community event. Next is a second consideration, council action on appointing Pam Hamer as the council's communication representative, then a second consideration, council action on appointing members to the community of health the library with its scandal campaign. Last, I knew, it was still up in the air, and I think the mayor asked anybody that was interested in working, so I'll let the mayor take the lead on that.
I have, I have a meeting, actually, with.
Pam and?
Roger Hewn, a week from Saturday, to try to see what we might be able to get, and then I've been playing for Grant, and then I've been playing phone tag with Pete McGregor.
Right. Next would be a complex on framing calls for the Red Final poster, and then council, and I don't have any information on that, I think council will, I'll find, get some information on it, so I will defer to her. Next was a complex action on removing the planner in front of the Kent Theater, we did reach out, or Marty reached out to the state bar marshal's office to get their input, that's not in their area purview, they did suggest that, in their opinion, that's not a fire answer out there, so, last meeting, we talked about looking at trying to incorporate this in the next year's budget, so, that's where we're at. Council action on the planning commission, bylaws that was brought to the planning commission for their consideration and is discussed, I did bring the wording to, as suggested by council, to the planning commission, and the consensus of the planning commission was the bylaws address how they operate, and that's. the bylaws address how they operate and conduct business, and the agendas decided by city staff, not the planning commission, and therefore a policy decision, so they believe a policy issue does not belong in the bylaws according to the, the, the bylaws. That being said, if council wishes, we can put together a policy on how to get on an agenda, that would be for any city agenda, something to consider, if that would help the situation.
Are you gonna have a statement that says you use Robert's rules? No? But I'm saying, are you going to add a statement that says you use Robert's rules' word?
I don't know.
Because I think that probably ought to be there.
I, I, I don't know the context, and I, I missed up, Robert's rules of order.
That the planning commission functions under Robert's rules' word. Are you gonna have a statement in the bylaws that say you function according to Robert's rules' word?
They're not in there now, I, I, this is the first. I mean, this is the first I've heard of a request to add that to us.
I can expand, but Rose had, at the MML conference, I was at, I ran into Coco, the, 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 the.
Provider's claim.
She said there isn't anything in Robert's rules of order that directly rules over agenda, but who can get on and off? So apparently it's gonna be up to us to create that policy.
Okay, I just, I, I understand, but.
I think Robert's rule does talk about how to add, take away items from the agenda, presenting to people.
I do believe, yeah.
But for, or against, I think that's the point that they're making here, is that if people want to add something to the planning commission agenda, they could request it, move to add something at that time, if somebody wanted to speak, they could add it at the meeting, if they had a vote.
If you function under Robert's rules.
If you're functioning under Robert's rules.
If you're not functioning under Robert's rules, then you need to say that. So I, I think that can happen, I'm agreeing, so I guess what I would say is, like, we have in our charter, that we function under Robert's rules. So we need to claim, then you kind of do it.
I put a checklist to these people to follow before they can be on the plan. How about that?
But even beyond that, I mean, I think we need to say, like, this is how we run our meeting. Like, I mean, most, most boards do that.
And, and if that's, if that's the wish of the council, we certainly can do that, but this is the first that's been brought my attention. Well, okay, if you're, of course, I'd make the committee and have possibly have the chair of the planning commission down with the city events and council, and actually.
Yeah, we talked about it down, definitely. Yeah, we have a full committee. But I can feel really strongly that we need to do whatever it is we say we do in writing.
The next item under the new business, we go, we go into an IFT with Cedar Springs Brewing Company. And in, in this, fill in discussions with the state as to what portion of that building can be qualified for the IFT. So what we're asking right now, we've, in discussions with Cedar Springs Brewing Company attorneys, the city attorney, and the state, we're, even though this agenda report doesn't reflect it, because this is all taking place since I filed the agenda report, we're asking the council to approve the full amount of the construction cost for twelve years at fifty percent of abatement, and then forward that to the state, and then the state tax commission would then make the final ruling whether the entire building can be qualified as the IFT, or just that portion directly associated with the brewing.
Sure.
That's the issue, the other option we had considered was going with this approximately twenty to twenty-two percent, and that, and that certainly was a viable option, however, if the state tax commission said they're available for the hundred percent of the building, then we would have to come back to the council and amend it the resolution, so that's why we chose to change course.
Full shot.
Yeah.
Little state.
Yeah, and that's basically, it's gonna come, it's gonna basically come down to what the state says, and then what the assessor comes up with on an assessed value. The next is a motion to approve, approve the purchase of a new lease vacuum from Old Dominion Brush Company at a cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand, six, four, seven. One of the things that I, I may bring back to the council is a thought that budgeted purchases, to consider them not needing a second reading because they would've been approved as the budget, as the first consideration during the budget process. Maybe a modification to the council policy that if it is a budgeted purchase, that we wouldn't need it to have two readings. So, if, and we can discuss that when this comes back up, but if that's something that council wishes to do, we can, we can do that. We talked about the zone.
We publish our budget, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's for a reading.
Right.
We talked about the community building development teams issues, the next was approved Veterans Day as a working house, a day for city staff, it's something we've done in the past where we, we're here, we lock the doors, and then we start working on our files and making sure that we're compatible with the, the retention schedule, and so it's been a pretty effective method to do it. It's not something we have done every year, but there's certain times that we need to do it, so we'll be asking for citizens, council's blessing on that.
Would it be a good idea to make it every year?
We can, yes, yeah, it's just a matter of, about, you know, how much we get done this day, you know, if we get it made done.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We'd come back with a recommendation as needed.
Okay.
Yep. And before I get to the management report, I just noticed that we're missing one thing on the agenda I would like council to consider adding, and that is an update on our USDA water and sanitary sewer project.
Where do you want it?
I, we could probably put it under old business as just an update, or unfinished business as an update, we could put it as, and right after mayor, the mayor's business, yeah.
Do I miss O?
Yep. There's roughly about halfway, maybe a little bit more on the project in that neighborhood, it's a good time to update. Great, we have our city engineer here, and you may, I don't know, have someone from Dean's also showing up. In terms of my report, I did reach out to Dr. Bender, and he does have March eleventh and twelfth of next year as well, April first and second available for our planning, basic planning process, he's gonna hold those dates open until we get back with him, so. I think it's, it's a good time to do it for the reasons I've presented, I'm just asking that, you know, if you can let me know in the middle of next week, tail end of next week at the latest, which your preference is, and then we'll start, we'll get it solid on this plan. Sheriff, sheriff's department, they have shift bids, Jason Van Dyke and Mike Canis will stay here on the day shift, our current day shift deputies. Chad, after our current night shift deputy will remain, and then Mike Stahl, used to be with our police department, he's chosen another assignment for a couple of reasons, number one, it's gonna reduce his commute probably in half, and number two, just gives him another experience in a different part of town, so it's good, so we'll have, and I'll defer to the sergeant on how to pronounce Maurice's last name. Dagno. Dagno. Okay. Michigan Minutes of the Week convention, it was, I, I, I thought it was really outstanding this year. One of the things, the workshops were very kind, there was a bribe of them, and the general session program was good. What I really liked about it is they introduced this concept of mobile workshops, so you actually got in, out into the community and saw things firsthand, as an example, I went to one where we visited a piece of property over the city of Traverse City, and they explained how they were going through the process of getting citizen input and engagement on what this piece of property should be. And we initially met at a, a meeting venue right downtown, had a lunch, and listened to two speakers, got out, walked to another area downtown, showed off a workspace that people can use that are in town, in fact, there was one young lady there from Brooklyn, she was in town for a couple of days working there, walked about eight or nine blocks to that project, and went through their downtown and then through their transitional area that shows their new streetscape, and then into this area and got to look at how that occurred. So, I mean, that was very good that there were good people on the community, they had ideas, they had a mobile workshop involving bicycles, they rented a bunch of bicycles, and they bicycled around Traverse City, looking at their complete streets with bicycle lanes in it and out there in the racks with their, what they call the cart trail up there, which I thought was really unique. They had some different venues, they didn't keep you in the fountain center, our closing meeting or section was at the State Theater, downtown Traverse City, another mobile workshop was at the Beesum Theater, that's on the waterfront. So they got them out into the community, so it wasn't a stale, sit-in-the-room listen, and they moved around, so I, I thought it was one of the better conventions I've been to, and I, you know, Councilman Powell was there, and I think you'd probably say the same thing.
I never went to one before, but I shouldn't go to some. And I felt sorry for all the gals that had been to them before, and they're all gelled up with their, he builds himself, now walking block after block at blisters and.
West Street, West Street Extension, we've taken the net, next step, because the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission Board approved our preliminary grant request, so the next step is I have to work with their executive director on an informational packet to present for the EDA for their consideration, so, once that is completed, I'm prior to submitting it to the EDA, then I bring it back to council for final authorization. City master plan update, again, my report was submitted before we had some changes, that we were supposed to get it kicked off at this past planning commission meeting, but because of the request from the community building development team, we didn't generate enough discussion that it would not allow for sufficient time to get started with the master plan, so we just backed it off. Next month, in November, we're going to invite the community, the public, to come to the meeting and help us kick off, so we'll just put it back in line. We've had some interest in banning smoking in the downtown area in front of the buildings, we've had a couple of people come forward. It, the concern I'm hearing is this, this, the punishment it creates, how it's perceived by the community and visitors, and then cigarette remains left on the sidewalk, we've had that issue with a couple of local establishments, and it's kind of hidden this and taking care of the problem, so. It's, I checked with the city attorney, and certainly we can do that.
Okay.
Again, regulating the downtown area, that being said, it could, it would probably be an enforcement nightmare, and we'd have to sign it to make sure that, you know, people that aren't from the community and are walking through, no. So, I don't know if it's something the council would like me to pursue, I certainly would work with the city attorney to come up with some draft language.
Do we have to provide a, like, location alternate, or how does that?
We would just ask if they smoke, or if it's back of the building.
We don't have to create a place?
No, 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 we could say that, you know, the downtown on our sidewalks, in the downtown area, we do not allow smoking on the main street. So, yeah, it was unique, I didn't think we could carve that out, but we can.
I think we can either.
Yeah, we can.
And this is something our business owners want?
Here, I know, I've heard that from a few of them myself, I don't know who's talked to him, but I've heard from a few of them. Like with mine, I'd like to get rid of the guy that puts his cigarette butts out on the corner in front of my building and saying he's a smoker.
Can we get some input from, like, the DDA or the chamber on how they feel about it?
We can bring it up at the next EDA meeting. I'll step forward and get their input, and then research it out.
I mean, is this super lifelong non-smoker thinks they're evil, I, of course, think it would be amazing, but I don't want to project that onto other people.
And finally, I'll be on vacation after the nineteenth through the thirtieth, and Linda will be the acting city manager, and I'll be available by email and cell phone. Which direction, what are you hunting?
Deer should be afraid.
Nope, I'm not, no, I'm just on the U.P. Too much work to shoot. Nancy, out of my report.
Okay.
Looks like it's just, well, work it kinder.
Representative from the festival, are you gonna read this letter from the board?